I call the January 10, 2024 Hampton School Board Meeting to order. This is the annual organizational meeting of the Hampton City School Board. As such, I will preside over the meeting until the election of a chairperson for the school board. Ms. Bowers, please call for the roll.
Ms. Afanjah? Here. Ms. Dr. Banks Gray?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse? Dr. Mason?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all school board members are present except Dr. Reginald Woodhouse. Sadly, Dr. Woodhouse recently lost his mother and is unable to attend tonight's meeting. Please keep Dr. Woodhouse and his family and your thoughts and prayers. At this time, we will move to Section 1.02, the opening of the meeting, and we will ask our student representative, Jonathan Jackson, to lead us at this particular point in the agenda.
Hello, everybody. If I could, I'd like to invite to the stand Ms. Shamari Clements, an eighth grader from Jones Magnet Middle School.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, Dr. Mason, honorable school board members, Dr. Haynes, Hampton Division Leadership Team, and other distinguished guests. My name is Shamari Clements, and the title of my poem is "Education is the Key." Education is the key that unlocks the doors to achievements, awards, and so much more. It gives me the courage to lift my voice, to express my opinions, and have freedom of choice. I am forever grateful to Hampton Public Schools for providing awesome teachers to educate, enhance, and encourage us to follow all specified rules. Education serves the purpose of preparing me for life. It will help me to acquire a great job so that I can reach higher heights. My goal to become a doctor, or maybe like my dad, an engineer, requires a good education and a willingness to persevere. Education is the key that will help me to excel and attain all of my goals. It is the catalyst for my dedication, my academic success, and my self-control. Education is the key that helps me to be the very best I can be: an achiever, a role model, a helper to others, and an upright citizen in the land of the free.
Thank you so much, Shamari. If I could, could I get you to tell us who you have with you today?
Today, I have my Barron Village family, my mom, my dad, and my siblings.
Alrighty. And who do you have representing you from Jones?
I have Ms. Slater.
Alrighty. And just a couple questions for you, Shamari. What's your favorite subject in school?
My favorite subject is geometry.
Alrighty. And last question for you: what are you aspiring to be when you grow up?
I am aspiring to be a teacher, a doctor, an engineer, and I'm really hoping I can get into the ACE program in Phoebus so I can do that stuff and I can get my associate's degree to go on to a four-year term college.
Alrighty. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Ms. Shamari Clements.
Thank you so much, Shamari. Would any school board members like to provide any remarks or comments?
I'd just like to say that was excellent, Shamari. Thank you so much for sharing with us tonight. I had the great pleasure of meeting Shamari's parents at Barron a few weeks back. You guys were doing an awesome job with her. Keep up the good work.
Shamari, thank you again for sharing your words of wisdom with us, and we certainly appreciate your understanding the importance of education. We recognize that it is the most powerful weapon you can use to change the world. And what you said today, you said it in a magnificent way. Looking forward to all the great things you will accomplish. I understand when you heard, when you mentioned Phoebus, you heard a lot of cheers because the Phoebus administration is back there, so they're always looking for future Phantoms. So you may want to shake a hand or two before you head out. But thank you again for your time. Moving on with the agenda, Section 1.03, the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the January 10, 2024 school board meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
There was a motion by Mr. Samuels, and it was seconded by Mr. Kilgore. Any discussion? Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Ms. Afanjah? Aye. Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. We'll now move on to the recognition portion of the agenda. At this time, I ask Ms. Kelly Goral, our Executive Director of Public Relations and Marketing, to come to the podium to lead us in our recognitions.
I thank you, Dr. Haynes, members of the school board, and members of our Hampton City Schools family. At this time, since Dr. Banks Gray is wearing the Phoebus blue like I am, I'm going to ask you to please proceed to the microphone for tonight's recognition. So our recognition this evening provides us the opportunity to celebrate our student athletes from Phoebus High School, Phoebus's 2023-2024 football team, as well as Coach Blunt and the coaching staff. So at this time, would Coach Jeremy Blunt, your coaching staff, and your entire football team, please join me right here on either side of the podium? How are you? Good. Well, Coach Blunt just said, "I'm going to see what you whipped up today," and I said, "Well, I'm here to talk about all your successes of this team." So it always feels great when I've got all these young men around me because I feel like I've got all my bodyguards right beside me. So here we go. So we're going to go ahead and start by talking about that regional championship game, which occurred on Saturday, November 25. Phoebus High School defeated War Hill High School, and we're sorry about that, Dr. Barrow. We know your son plays for War Hill. But they defeated War Hill High School at Darling Stadium to win the Class IV Region A Championship Game. Let's give them a round of applause for that one. Next, they advanced to the state semifinals on December 2nd, and they were again at Darling Stadium, and they took on King George High School. And the Phantoms had another big win, which then brought them to the final game of the year for the Phantoms on Saturday, December 9th, at Liberty University in Lynchburg, Virginia. Phoebus played the Salem Spartans, and I believe they were from Roanoke. Is that correct?
Yes.
Excellent. They were from Roanoke for that Class IV State Championship. And I am going to say, with one second, yes, one second remaining in the game, the Phantoms scored an 86-yard touchdown that broke that tied game and gave them a win of 21 to 14, and they obtained that Class IV State Championship. Let's give them a round of applause. And not only did it give them the state championship, if you can follow me on this, it gave the Phantoms, they brought home a back-to-back-to-back, so that would be a three-peat state championship. So that's a huge round of applause for our Phantoms. So before Dr. Banks Gray invites all of you gentlemen to join her onstage, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the screen to view a few highlights from that exciting So a big special thanks to Wube Gabray from PEG TV. He attended the game, he captured all the footage, and he created this video. What I will say is when I was viewing the video and I saw that throw, that 86-yard touchdown, and you missed the catch, I said, "Well, where was the catch?" And he said, "There were three people in my ray," and I was getting pushed out of the way so I could get the run. So we didn't get the exact catch on film, but we were able to capture at least that throw and that run and that final touchdown with one second left in the game for that championship win. And then over to you, Dr. Banks Gray.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Goral. So Coach Blunt, would you and your team please join me onstage by the microphone? So before I present the team certificate and banner, as well as the school board coins, I would like to share a few more things about our Phantoms. Now, hold on to your hats, ladies and gentlemen. This is the intriguing part of the presentation. Now, this state crown is not only the Phantoms' third consecutive championship win, but it's also the second season in a row with a 15-0 record, bringing their current winning streak to 35 games. Also, the previous two state championships came in Class III, and this championship win makes the Phantoms, who won their first seven championships in Class V, the first VHSL school, and that's Virginia High School School League ever, to win the football state titles in three VHSL classes. Now, that certainly deserves a round of applause. Didn't realize we were at a church service. Let's really give them a round of applause, y'all. There it is. So on behalf of our current chair, Dr. Mason, the Hampton School Board, and our superintendent, Dr. Raymond Haynes, I am honored to present the team a banner and certificate of achievement from the Hampton City Schools, as well as school board coins, coins for a job well done for capturing the Class IV championship. So now I'm going to get their certificate. And it reads as such: Certificate of Achievement from the Hampton School Board. Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Phoebus High School Varsity Football Team, Virginia High School League, Class IV State Championship. And it's signed by our superintendent, Dr. Raymond Haynes, and our chairperson, Dr. Richard Mason. Congratulations, sir. Now, these are our special crafted commemorative coins, and they have, on the front, it has, y'all can see, I'm in bifocal denial, so if you see the up and down with the glasses, that's what's going on. So this actually has, on the front, it has "Every Child, Every Day, Whatever It Takes." And on the back, it is has, from the Hampton City, excuse me, School Board, and I'm also under the weather, so I'm sounding like a frog up here, too. So that's for you. I'm going to give this out to each one of you this evening.
So we could spread out enough so I can see each of your faces, but not too far. You've got to be like you love each other. And I need my glasses for distance, so now let me take mine off so I can see my camera. Can we say champs?
Champs!
Champs, please. Awesome. And before you all leave the stage, we'd like to offer Coach Blunt the opportunity to say a few words. So if he'd like to go to the mic and say a few words about his championship team and his coaching staff?
First of all, thank you, everyone. We appreciate the opportunity to even be here tonight and be recognized. To Dr. Haynes and the wonderful central office, thank you for all your support. Dr. Mason, school board members, thank you all for your support. Our wonderful principals and our administrative team, thank you guys for your support. Our city athletic director, Mr. Fortune, as well as Coach Ward, our athletic director, thank you guys for your support. What I say about these guys this year, no one gave us a chance this year. Moving up into another division, they saw a lot of people move on from our 23 class, and they didn't, they didn't think these guys could get it done, but they endured. And with a few seconds left on the clock, it's a testament to their pride, their character, and overall their tenacity and how hard they're willing to fight for. So it's an awesome season this year, and the school now has ten in the history books, but this is one that will forever be remembered. So thank you all.
Before Coach Blunt and his team returns to their seat, we would like to recognize Mr. Richard Fortune, the school division's director of athletics. Please stand to be recognized. Also, I'd like to ask the Phoebus administration, under the leadership of Executive Principal David Coakley, as well as Maurice Ward, the school's athletic director, any family members, colleagues, and other special guests who are here tonight to support the Phantoms, to please stand to be recognized.
Job well done. And before they actually go to their seats, I've got one last little thing. It's kind of a shameless plug, but for those of you that don't know, Dr. Raymond Haynes, our superintendent, has started a podcast this year called HCS Talks. And you can view, listen in on a podcast anywhere you listen to podcasts, and one of his guests this fall was Coach Blunt. And he talked about last year's championship team, about this year's team. Of course, he hadn't won a championship yet, but he was saying he was, they were going to do it, and he did exactly what he said they were going to do. So I encourage you to really look up HCS Talks and listen in on that interview because it was a great interview. And there was a time there in that interview that, we didn't play it, but Dr. Haynes had Coach Blunt almost a little choked up there. I will say that. So I know he's big and tough and that big football coach, but he had him a little choked up. So as you all are exiting the stage to go back to your seats, Dr. Haynes has for you, Coach Blunt, a special pin that says "HCS Talks" on it that we would like to provide you. So, thank you all so much. Let's give them another big round of applause.
Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Superintendent, as they're leaving and going back to their seats or getting ready to exit the building, I'd just like to just say a couple of things. Actually, when it comes to the Phoebus High School football Phantoms, there's a lot you can say, but there are three things I want to say. And one goes back years ago when the Phoebus team was playing a team in Charlotte, and my husband and I went to that game. And we were trying to catch up with the Phoebus team and coaches. You all had gone to Fuel Pizza, and we had missed you, but as we were walking through the tunnel, of course, you all beat the team from Charlotte, and they were supposed to be a powerhouse. And I remember, we were walking through with some students from that school, and they said, "Man, those boys from Phobos are bad." I'll never, ever forget that. That was the first thing. Second thing is, late this summer, my husband and I had visited a winery in Williamsburg, and we were sitting outside at the fire pit, and everybody was talking about different things, and this one man stood up and kind of held everybody at bay in terms of audience. And he started talking about a team on South Side, and that team, I knew that team, I knew the team's name, and I listened, and he was talking about how well they were going to do going into the playoffs. So of course, I got into his business, and I said, "Well, who are you?" And he said, "I'm one of the coaches." And I said, "Well, I'm from Hampton, and I'm Phoebus High School." And he went on in front of all those people to talk about not only Phoebus High School, but about Coach Blunt specifically. He said, "I've never met a man with such integrity. I've never met a team that when they take the field, they have class, and they play fair, and they still beat you." And because he said that, and because so many people very rarely hear people say good things about them, I immediately called Coach Blunt on the phone, did I not? And that coach got on the phone and talked to Coach Blunt about how much he respected him. Now, I did hear Coach Blunt, because he had him on speaker, say, "And we respect your program as well." So I just want to say what a class act that was, that we've got a coach that is respected across the state. That man did not know me, but when I mentioned Phoebus, he could have said anything, but that's what he chose to say. And the third thing I want to talk about is you hear, everybody knows I breathe football every day. And when I listen to people like Stephen A. Smith talk about, "A team is not winning because something's not going well in the locker room." I look at that as the opposite of what Phoebus High School stands for. Yes, they are winning games. Yes, they are doing things that people say speak to integrity and to class, but there's something right going on in the locker room. For you all to not only have that spirit, but to win in one second with a backup quarterback, let that be known, when the quarterback got hurt, and still come out to be a team. So my congratulations to Phoebus High School football Phantoms.
All right, Dr. Haynes, that concludes our recognitions for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Goral. We'll now move to the organizational part of the meeting, Section 3.01. The school board shall elect one of its members chairman. Is there a motion for the chairman of the Hampton City School Board for 2024? Kilgore?
Mr. Chair, it's my honor to nominate our prior chair, Dr. Richard Mason, to continue as our chair for this school year.
Second.
So it has been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Jackson Afanjah. Is there any discussion? Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Congratulations to you, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Richard Mason. Thank you for your leadership, and we look forward to continuing this work together as we operate under the mantra, "One community, one transformation, excellence with intentionality." At this time, I will turn the remainder of the meeting over to our chair, Dr. Richard Mason.
Thank you, Doc Haynes. You certainly can continue. You're doing a wonderful job. All right, thank you all so much. It certainly means a lot from my fellow board members to want to continue this work together, and I will continue to do all that I can do to lead this board with integrity as we continue to move the needle forward with Hampton City Schools. And so thank you all for your leadership and your continued support of Hampton City Schools. All right. Next item on the agenda is 3.02. The school board shall elect one of its members as vice chair. Is there a motion?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to nominate Dr. Tina Banks Gray as vice chair. I know, basically, I'm supposed to hold my comments until you ask for the question, but I'd like to do it now because I want to speak to why I think she would serve yet again in this capacity. When I nominated her before as vice chair, I was committed to the fact that she had been such a stronghold of information and commitment in this community. Her aspirations in terms of making sure everybody feels included runs from Asbury to Aberdeen, and it speaks volumes that she can talk to people in high places, and as a song says, "I know folk in low places." She is committed to the school division in a way that I have not seen in many, many years. She understands that diversity is a strength, and she is for all of our children. I know she would do a fantastic job because in the job she's already done, it speaks volumes in terms of her being vice chair. She is a woman of God, she's a woman of faith, she's a woman of loyalty, she's a woman of commitment, and I think all of those are strengths we can find in any leader today and would hope- today and would hopefully find in our leaders today. And I would like to nominate her full-fledged and holy for her position as vice chair of the Hampton School Board.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right. It's been properly moved and seconded that we reelect Dr. Tina Banks Gray as vice chair of the Hampton City School Board. Is there any discussion?
The only discussion I have is that I think she's the best. I'm committed. If you, if you cannot tell that by name, I'm committed to this lady being vice chair of our school board.
All right, Ms. Cherry, then cash that check. All right, that's a good thing. Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. Dr. Banks Gray, congratulations to you as well. Would you like to take a couple minutes?
Well, Ms. Cherry has me a little emotional. I don't know if it's the, the words or my antibiotics, but something has me terribly emotional this evening. But, Ms. Cherry, I wanted to sincerely thank you. I truly appreciate your con words. You really did move me, and I really do appreciate your support, ma'am. And I learn from the best, that's all I know.
Well, you know, I have to tell you this, and I'm just gonna say this. And I know we gotta get on with the meeting. But, you know, I always like to quote people who make sense. And when you talk about the Clemson coach, Dabo Sweeney, he says something that, Dr. Banks Gray, you are the epitome of. And he says, "Never let the light that shines on you be brighter than the light that shines in you." And that's you. Just want to say that.
I bless you. She's just, she's tearing me up, y'all. I can't handle it. But, I still appreciate you and the rest of my colleagues for the nomination as vice chair. I am committed to serving this role. I understand this position, and I will continue to do my absolute best to advocate for quality education for all Hampton City School students. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Next item on the agenda, 3.03, the school board on the recommendation of the superintendent shall appoint Joy Charbonneau as clerk of the school board. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Afanjah that we approve on the recommendation of the superintendent, Ms. Joy Charbonneau, as the clerk of the school board. Where is Joy? I know I saw her. Everybody can see who she is. All right, all right. All right. Is there any discussion? Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. Congratulations. Where's Joy? Congratulations. All right. Now, the school board on the recommendation, which is item 3.04, of the superintendent shall appoint Carolyn Bowers as deputy clerk of the board. What is the pleasure of the board? Is there a nomination, a motion, I'm sorry?
So moved.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mr. Samuels that we, on the recommendation of the superintendent, appoint Carolyn Bowers as the deputy clerk of the school board. Any discussion? Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Look at me like that.
Ms. Joy will call for the vote?
No, I'll do it.
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Oh, aye.
You said, "Oh, aye."
I'll explain later. Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you so much. Words cannot express how we feel about Carolyn Bowers. When I tell you this is not an easy group to keep together and organized, yeah, it's like herding cats. I will be totally honest with you, you know? And you have done a stellar job as clerk of this board, keeping us well informed on all matters pertaining to Hampton City Schools and, and board matters. And so, we can't say thank you enough. I know we've, we've, we've done some things, and I hope you had a chance to use some of that luggage we gave you, but.
Not yet.
But we are excited that you are willing to, to stick around and hang out with us for a little bit longer, even as a deputy clerk. And so, thank you so much for, for doing that. And we look forward to continuing this road with you for just a little bit longer.
Yes.
All right. Next, the school board shall affix a time, date, and place for holding regular meetings for the ensuing year. And that has been posted on the website as well, on, excuse me, on the agenda. All right. And at this time, the chair will entertain a motion on said meetings for 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly, moved by Ms. Cherry and seconded by Dr. Banks Gray that we approve the meeting schedule, the draft schedule for 2024 for the school board meeting of Hampton City Schools. Any discussion? All right. Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. And I do want to point out, in the meeting, the draft meeting that was actually presented, that all meetings will be held moving forward here at Jones Magnet Middle School, unless otherwise indicated. We will also start at 6:30. In addition, the regular meetings will be broadcast televised, should I say, but all of our regular work sessions that would normally be held at Rupert Sargent, we will not televise those meetings here, even though we will be meeting at Jones. Only the first meeting of the month will be televised. All right? So, I just want to make sure that the listening audience and community is aware of that. All right? So, next is 3.06, the school board on recommendation of the superintendent shall appoint Dr. John Cagiano as the superintendent's designate to attend meetings of the school board and represent the superintendent in his absence. Hey, John. Is there a motion from the board?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Samuels and seconded by Ms. Afanjah that we approve the recommendation of Dr. John Cagiano as the superintendent's designate to attend the meetings of the school board and represent the superintendent in his absence. Any discussion? Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Cagiano, for your service and continued support of Hampton City Schools. All right? And so, item 3.07, the school board on the recommendation of the superintendent shall appoint Kelly Goral as our Freedom of Information Officer, which is FOIA. You're doing an awesome job as one. And that's not an easy job. You have to corral that information. What is the pleasure of the board regarding the FOIA officer?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Ms. Cherry and seconded by Mr. Samuels that on the recommendation of the superintendent that we appoint Ms. Kelly Goral as our Freedom of Information Officer. Any discussion? Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Goral, and thank you for all that you do for Hampton City Schools and providing lots of great information to the community about what's going on within Hampton City Schools.
Oh, absolutely.
Incidentally, you know, we, we just had some inclement weather. And the information that went out about that situation, I had people that were, were, you know, talking about how well Hampton City Schools is making sure that the community is aware of what's happening. And so, thank you for, for leading those efforts and making sure that the community is aware of those types of situations, but also about everything that we're doing here in Hampton City Schools as we make smart choices and great choices. Is that right? All right. All right. So, that wraps up our organizational portion of our meeting, and we will move on to item number four, which is our consent agenda. 4.01, the personnel report, number 24-01. 4.02, minutes of the school board meeting of December 6, 2023. 4.03, certification of the closed session of December 6, 2023. 4.04, school board consent to receipt of donations for January 2024. And 4.05, expulsion number 23-111. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mr. Samuels that we approve tonight's consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just for the sake, again, of transparency, item 4.04, school board consent to receipt of donations, January 2024, the school board has to vote on any donations to schools or the departments or to the division totaling over $500.
All right. Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. All right. Next item on the agenda is number five, superintendent and staff reports. And at this time, I will turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Raymond L. Haynes.
Thank you, Chairman Mason, Vice Chair Banks Gray, members of the board, division leadership team in the Hampton community. Under the superintendent's reports, we do have one report tonight. It is an update with November 2023 financial statements. Typically, Ms. Brittany Branch would give that report for us, but in her absence, Dr. John Cagiano, our deputy superintendent and chief of staff. But prior to Dr. Cagiano presenting, I would like to introduce, reintroduce to some and introduce to others, Dr. Thornton, Dr. Michael Thornton. He's a veteran leader in public education. He retired in 2020 after 34 years in Virginia school divisions, most recently serving as chief financial officer of Norfolk Public Schools and superintendent of Surrey County Public Schools. Dr. Thornton holds a doctorate in educational leadership and policy from Virginia Tech. But, Mr. Samuels, you would be pleased to know he has a bachelor's degree from Norfolk State University. Behold the green and gold. Many of you remember Dr. Thornton. He served as our chief financial officer from 2005 through 2006. He also served in senior leadership roles with Williamburg, Williamsburg, James City County Schools, and Hanover County Schools. He is returning to Hampton City Schools to fill in for Ms. Brittany Branch as she enjoys time bonding with her new baby boy. So, welcome back, Dr. Michael Thornton.
Dr. Thornton, I would like to say something. Welcome back, but we're gonna have to talk about that NSU stuff a little bit later, all right? It's okay, though, but we'll talk about it. But welcome back, and thank you so much for being willing to step in. And that's important. You know, I would like to say, you know, when we look at educators stepping back into different roles within school divisions, it's because they do have a love of what we do in public education. And oftentimes, people can retire from jobs and never look back. But we have truly been fortunate within Hampton City Schools to have people who have served this division and served them well, that are willing to come back when we have situations like this where we need someone to step in. So, thank you so much for thinking enough of Hampton City Schools and being willing to come back and be, and spend some time with us. All right? Thank you.
Dr. Cagiano?
Thank you, Dr. Haynes. Good evening, Dr. Mason, Chair Mason, Vice Chair Banks Gray, members of the board. Dr. Haynes, regarding the division's November 2023 financial statements, revenues total approximately $83.5 million and are 2.12% lower when compared to the prior fiscal year. The difference is primarily due to the timing of payments from the local governing body, which are received based on monthly cash flow needs. Humiliative expenditures and encumbrances total approximately $121 million and are 13% higher when compared to the prior fiscal year. The difference is here primarily due to increased operations and maintenance encumbrances that were carried forward from fiscal year 2023 to fiscal year 2024. Additionally, there are more instructional expenditures encumbered in 2024 in comparison to 2023. The fiscal year 2024 budget is based on the average daily membership of 19,036 students, which were reported on March 31, 2023. The fall student membership reported to the Virginia Department of Education does use our enrollment as of September 30, 2023, which was 18,897 students, resulting in a difference of 139 students. This information, of course, will be used by the Virginia Department of Education to reforecast the division's fiscal year 2024 budget. And as the board is certainly well aware, a decrease in membership will certainly directly impact state funding. Once the reforecast is released by the state to school divisions, which we know is typically early spring, state revenue and state sales tax projections certainly may decrease from the fiscal year 2024 original state budget that was presented and approved by both the board and the city council. So, at this time, I typically say I would be happy to answer any questions, but I know Dr. Michael Thornton is here to answer some questions as well. And sitting next to Dr. Thornton is one of our top financial team members, Ms. Ashley Ranger. But we certainly would be happy to entertain any questions from the board this evening.
All right, thank you. Any questions from board members?
Go ahead. I don't have a question, I have a comment. You go ahead. Okay.
I really don't have a question, Dr. Cagiano. I may have a question for Dr. Haynes as it relates to ESFUND. I know there, we have to use those up by 2024.
Yes, that's correct, the end of September.
End of September. And so, I want to know if we are gonna get an update as to where we reside with those funds to make sure that we're spending those funds and making sure we do not send any of those funds back to the federal government. So, I'm hoping that for us to get an update on that, Dr. Haynes.
Yes.
And.
Dr. Thornton and Ms. Ashley.
Yeah. Great question. In fact, we have our first division leadership team and finance department budget meeting this Friday at 10 a.m., and that's one of the agenda topics. So, great question.
Ms. Chair?
Okay, thank you. Um. Trying to tell them how to work the mic. Trying to work, get the mic working. Looking at Dr. Thornton and Ashley Ranger sitting next to him, it's, it's like I'm having deja vu, something going on here. This is stepping back in time. And working with two awesome finance folk who, who knew their stuff. And I'm just glad that both of you all are sitting there and sitting here with us because I know we're in good hands in Hampton City Schools. We've got some sharp people on board right now. But like Dr. Mason said, to have people come back and want to participate. And I know you've been helping us with the budget over the years, Ashley, and we appreciate that. But I just want to say, every time we have a board meeting and we have to do the receipt of donations, and I always talk about that transparent piece about the $500, it's because Dr. Michael Thornton taught me that. When we would have our divisional leadership team meetings, he'd say, "You gotta tell the people what you're voting on." So, I wanted to make sure anything that involves money, he wants the public to know about it. So, that has been ingrained in me in all of those years. So, Dr. Thornton, I never forgot that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Dr. Haynes?
That concludes the reports from the superintendent. Mr. Chair?
All right, thank you very much. So, moving along to item number six, deliberation. We have 6.01, revision of school board policy GBE, staff health and safety. 6.02, revision of school board policy GC, instructional staff licensure. 6.03, revision of school board policy GCBB, athletic extracurricular supplements. 6.04, revision of school board policy GCBDC, personal leave. 6.05, revision of school board policy GCDA, effect of criminal conviction. 6.06, revision of school board policy GCL, professional staff development. 6.07, review of school board policy GCQA, non-school employment by professional staff member. 6.08, revision of school board policy GCQAB, compensation for off-site services. 6.09, revision of school board policy KQ, commercial, promotional, and corporate sponsorships and partnerships. And all of, well, all except for KO is housed with Ms. Ruth. Hello, Ms. Ruth. So, board members, do you have any comments or questions, clarifying questions or anything for, for Ms. Ruth? for, for Ms. Ruth?
I do.
Yes, Ms. Chair?
Ms. Chair, thank you so much. Um, it's not specifically for a policy that is listed, Ms. Ruth, um, but under deliberation, and I don't see it under items for action, and I know it has to probably come in the first read, but at our October fourth meeting, when we had the discussion, um, about, I think we were talking about policy J E C B, when we were talking about the admission of students, and we talked about homeless students and transfer students, and we were told that, because Mr. Samuels and I both had the same question, that the policy that would speak to foster care children would be in January. And this is the only meeting we're having, and I don't see it here. I could be missing it, but could you bring me up to date on that?
I absolutely can bring you up to date on that. And you do not see it on the January agenda, because it had to go back through the policy committee, and the November meeting was canceled. So, we will be meeting in February, and so you should see something once we have been through the policy committee. We took it back.
Okay, so like, February?
I would, um, if not in February, just depends on, on, um, I don't remember the exact date of the meeting, so it will either be at the second meeting in February or one of the nineteen meetings we have in March.
See, that's why I asked too, because I know we meet so many times in March, and we're focused on that budget, and that piece on foster care children was, was critical. And we had not addressed that.
Yeah, but you will see it either, it will not be on the first, it will not be at the first meeting in February, so it will either be at the second meeting in February, and I was being sarcastic, but it will be at one of the four meetings, three to four meetings that we have in, in March.
Okay, thank you.
We are, it is, it's not been forgotten, we are working on it. Um, we just, due to unforeseen circumstances, had to cancel the November meeting.
Okay, Mr. Samuels, you okay?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, thank you, we appreciate that.
You're welcome.
All right. All right, and then the only other was KQ? And that was with Ms. Oliver? Dr. Oliver, I'm, uh, please, please forgive me. Dr. Oliver. Any questions for Dr. Oliver regarding policy KQ?
Yeah, we kind of-
All right.
No.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, and we will act accordingly and move those things along. Moving to item number seven, items for action. Seven point zero one, V SBA Code of Conduct for School Board Members. Seven point zero two, School Board Resolution for the Support of Military, Connected Children and Families. Seven point zero three, Revision of School Board Policy, IIBD, School Library Services. Seven point zero four, Revision of School Board Policy, IJD, College and Career Readiness. Seven point zero five, Revision of School Board Policy, IKF, The Virginia Assessment Program and Graduation Requirements. Seven point zero six, Revision of School Board Policy, LI, Relations with Educational Accreditation Agencies. Seven point zero seven, Revision of School Board Policy, JFCI, Student Drug Abuse. Seven point zero eight, Revision of School Board Policy, JHC, Student Health Services and Requirements. Seven point zero nine, Revision of School Board Policy, JHCA, Physical Examinations of Students. Seven point one zero, Revision of School Board Policy, JHCB, Student Immunizations. Seven point one one, Revision of School Board Policy, JHCC, Communicable and Infectious Diseases. What is the pleasure of the board regarding seven point zero one through seven point one one?
Mr. Chair, um, I recommend that we, we approve the first two items individually and then take the remaining as a block. So, I move approval of action item seven point zero one. Second?
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Kilgore that we approve item seven point zero one, V SBA Code of Conduct for School Board Members, and seconded by Mr. Samuels. Is there any discussion? All right, I would like to say that to the, to the listening public and community that, basically, this is a code of conduct and standards that we, as a board, sign off on and agree to, that we will uphold as elected mem- elected members to the Hampton City School Board. And this information can be found, um, on, on the school division's website, but also the signature portion will be on record at, um, the, uh, at SAC, so you can definitely get a copy of this. And, and, and by all means, hold us accountable as your elected school board members to this code of conduct. All right, Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, next, item seven point zero two, what is the pleasure of the board?
My apologies, I make a motion that we accept seven point zero two and through seven point one one as a block.
Second?
Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Samuels that we take seven point zero two, item seven point one one, as a block. Any discussion? I would like to just, just mention the importance of school board resolution for the support of military and connected children and families. We have a very strong military population here in, within Hampton City Schools, and we have a very strong relationship. Uh, Dr. Jennifer Oliver, um, has picked up the reins from, uh, a person who was previously in, in, I know her name. Who was previously in that position, Ms. Ann Bain. Um, and we have several schools that are, um, identified as purple, purple ribbon schools, um, and that, that identifies their significant connection and the supports that we provide to our military families. And so, um, I do want to make sure we highlight the importance of item seven point zero two with that resolution. All right, Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. Next item is item number eight, Hearing of Any Delegations or Presentation of Any Written Communications or Petitions. Have you received any?
I have none.
Okay, all right, so we're gonna move along to item number nine, information. Nine point zero one, uh, Hampton School Policies Are Available to the Public Online at www.hampton.k12.vaa.us. And it's very important, we, we certainly invite our community to look at all of the policies, because those are the things that we, uh, use to govern, uh, Hampton City Schools and, and, and keep things moving along, um, as a board, but also as, uh, a division. Next, uh, is nine, nine point zero two, our next meeting. The next regular meeting will be held on February the seventh, twenty twenty-four, right here at Jones Magnet Middle School, and our next work session will be held on February twenty-first, right here at Jones Magnet Middle School. Once again, I do want to state that all meetings will be held at Jones, um, Magnet Middle School. However, the second meetings will, will not be televised, because those are our regular work session meetings. We've just changed the location, but we will continue to televise our first, uh, meeting each, each month. All right, so, nine point zero three, other items for information. I will start with our, our superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair Banks Gray, members of the board and Hampton community. Didn't get a chance to do it before, because, uh, Dr. Oliver was, did not attend that previous meeting, but I want you all to please join me in congratulating Dr. Jennifer Oliver. Dr. Oliver. Dr. Oliver recently earned her doctorate from National University. The title of her dissertation is Predicting Dual Enrollment Course Completion Among Males in Virginia: A Quantitative Correlational Study with an Ordinal Logistics Reject- Regression Analysis. That's a mouthful. Dr. Oliver's research study investigated the factors influencing the completion of dual enrollment courses among male participants enrolled at the Virginia Peninsula Community College. Congratulations once again to Dr. Jennifer Oliver. Schools and offices will be closed on Monday, January fifteenth, in observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day. High school exams will take place beginning Friday, January nineteenth, through Wednesday, January twenty-fourth. The end of the first semester is Wednesday, January twenty-fourth. Thursday, January twenty-fifth is an unencumbered teacher work day, and Friday, January twenty-sixth, is a professional development day. As such, students will not report on Thursday, January twenty-five, nor January, nor Friday, January twenty-sixth. The second semester officially begins on Monday, January twenty-ninth. Next week, January fourteenth through the twentieth, is Virginia, is Virginia Principal Appreciation Week. A huge thank you to all of our principals for their hard work and dedication to their students, staff, families, and communities, and supporting us in our efforts to keep the main thing, the main thing, under the mantra of One Community, One Transformation, Excellence with Intentionality. That concludes my informational items, Mr. Chair.
All right, other board members? Dr. Banks Gray?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I wanted to congratulate you once again, sir, in your current position as our chair. Um, it is always said that it is not an easy seat to sit in, and we just truly appreciate all the hard work and all of the sacrifices that you put in to, um, serve in this capacity, and I truly appreciate your leadership. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, just in, in closing, I would like to say that, um, and ask the community to keep Dr. Reginald Woodhouse, our, our board member, uh, school board member who's not present, and his family, um, in prayer, um, with the recent passing of, of his mother. And it's, it's not easy, uh, taking that road and that challenge of, of dealing with the, the death of, of family members, especially the death of a parent. So, please keep, uh, Dr. Woodhouse and his family in prayer, um, as we move along. But thank you to, uh, the citizens of this community, because we pride ourselves on all of the support that we get, uh, for Hampton City Schools from our community, from city council, um, as well. And so, thank you, um, and, and happy new year to each and every one of you, and we look forward to continued greatness here within Hampton City Schools, as we continue to do great things for every child, every day, whatever it takes. All right, thank you. And with no further business, I declare this meeting adjourned.